DeBella?
Here.
Adam? Anderson? Abidijian?
Here.
Kazana? Yul?
Here.
Bush? Curry?
Here.
DeSai?
Here.
Drake?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Bardot?
Here.
Gentile? See Commissioner Gentile is on the webex. Healy? Hoffman? Hoegh?
Here.
Holloway?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
LeChance? Commissioner LeChance, can you hear me on the webex? Lester? Lewis? Magnin? Mandig?
Here.
Meniscalco? Kane?
Here.
Patel? Potowski?
Here.
Salome?
Here.
Stuber? Taylor?
Here.
Torres? Wolf? We have it formed.
Page 25, United States of America, and to the government's statements, nomination, and the government's approval, we're being adjusted for all.
Item 4, public minutes of June 12, 2023.
Stone, in your chair, second.
Any additions or additions? If not, I'm going to pay the 25.
Hi.
Hi.
The board? Item 5, public comment relative to agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, this is Elizabeth Bryde. I'd like to make a comment if I may. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my feedback on Agenda Item Number 9, B, the proposed sewer house connection program. I am an MDC customer and homeowner in West Hartford. On May 30th, 2023, I did share my feedback on the proposed sewer ordinance revisions at a public hearing that was held, and I attended Monday's maintenance committee meeting. Today, I'd like to briefly share some initial thoughts. I am glad that the new program that is being proposed will offer some relief to homeowners who need to make repairs for their sewer connections on their home or property. However, as I commented previously, they do not currently address some of the other issues customers are facing, especially as of your age to be into a retroactivity and essential reimbursement for repairs that have already been made out of necessity. To illustrate my point, I'd like to briefly share the issue I'm currently dealing with with my own home. In January 2023, we had a sewage back to inner hall following the MDC emergency line. They came out that night and explained the processes to follow, and also gave us recommended contractors for repairs. We arranged for an MDC-approved contract in the current situation. We learned through the contractor and the MDC staff who care on part doing this process that our sewer line did not go into the street as many do, but it actually went down the hole behind our house, off our property, into the neighbor's property, heading to the woods behind their house before connecting to the main sewer line. A camera determined that the line on our property was clear, and the issue was some tree roots in the pipe in the woods behind my neighbor's house. As a result of the backup, we were not able to remain in our home for over a week. Our basement now requires significant repair. Our lawn was destroyed in several major areas due to the trucks and stones needed to fix the situation. Ultimately, a pipe had to be replaced in the woods on my neighbor's property, and it cost us $12,283. Our house and lawn have yet to be repaired, and it's now almost six months later. It's important to note that due to the way the pipe was structured, we had absolutely no access as homeowners to this pipe for maintenance or repair, unless there any agreement in place. The proposed program doesn't address situations like this one, where we were held responsible for pipes that are actually on someone else's property and to which we had no access or or yield. In addition, the proposed sewer house connection program currently does not address the issue of retroactivity, and it should, as it sure there others dealing with situations like mine. Related to this issue is the new fund announced by the governor on June 26, 2023. As you know, the New Hartford Sewer System Repair and Improvement Fund helps homeowners in North Hartford who have been impacted by sewer issues, which is great. As I understand it, this program allows homeowners who have been impacted by damage on or after January 1st, 2021, to apply for reimbursement. Given that this new fund for Hartford residents allows for retroactive reimbursement, I believe the sewer house connection program should also allow for this to help other MDC customers who have been affected by costly sewer issues and repairs. I would like to again respectfully request that language along retroactive reimbursement be added to the sewer house connection program, or at a minimum, some language be added that allows for some retroactive reimbursement for unique situations like mine. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Further public comment?
Yes, Chairman DeBella, Attorney Joe Shereko, independent consumer advocate. I would just like to fall upon this great time by saying that her story is the quintessential example as to why retroactive application of the ordinances is appropriate at the very least in limited circumstances such as hers. And to the extent that this board is concerned now opening the floodgates by making it retroactively look bold, they could certainly add language to the proposed ordinances that would give staff description, but limited to unique circumstances like what was just described. So on the note, I just would like to again urge this board to add language to clarifying that in certain instances, the ordinances can have retroactive application. Thank you.
Further public comment? Is there any further public comment? If not, public comment is closed. Report from the district chairman?
There is none. Report from Chief Executive Officer.
Yes, thank you, briefly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's a lot of discussion here in the agenda items. I do want to just mention one item as we deal with this issue on an annual basis, given the Army Corps of Engineers agreement that we're trying to exit for the Colbert Reservoir. I did receive a number of phone calls from First Selectman Don Stein from Barckhamsted, and there was lots of concerns early this year than typical, but in June, that there was lack of flow in the west branch of the Farmington River, and that they had concerns that it was in fact restricting recreation and fishing. And so we had a meeting two weeks ago, and right around that two-week timeframe, we started getting rain, and I think we got like three inches of rain, then we got seven inches of rain, and five inches of rain. So the issue has, in a sense, gone away, and it will go away for a month or so, but the issue still is out there. And so we met with them, Chris, myself, and staff went up there to meet with the four watershed towns and a state representative and state senator to talk about this issue. And we went through, I won't get into the details because I've explained this a thousand times about what's going on with our 10 billion gallons behind the Colbert Reservoir, but what we explained to them is what we need is their support to abandon this water source, which we're in the process of doing through the abandonment process with DPH and the state legislature. Chris is probably going to get into the details on where we are with that. They agreed to support us in letter form. We've drafted a letter for their review. They've agreed to sign it. The senator and state rep have already signed it, and basically what it says is they support the MDC abandoning this, quote, "potential future emergency drinking water source," and that they do not want this water to be diverted ever, in a sense, for drinking water purposes, and they would rather see this water best used in diverting it directly into west branch of the Farmington River for recreation, fishing, and all those good things. So once we get that letter signed, the letter will be sent to Lori Matthew at DPH, and we will provide you with copies of that letter. So that's really all I have to say, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Abidijian?
This is for the Chief Executive. I had a little bit, this is the proper place to do it. We had a call from Lady Connaught Windsor. She was very, very upset because she was having a hard time paying her bill online. She couldn't do it. She just was very frustrated. Called up Scott, called up Chris, and they got together with customer service, and I just wanted to say this lady was ecstatic. She was very happy, loved the customer service, did whatever. She just lost her husband, so whichever you guys did was fun, I don't know, but she was very happy. It's good to hear a positive from our customers.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further, you have nothing else?
I have a brief report.
Yes. Chief Legal Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, District Counsel, just a brief report as to the abandonment petition that Scott was referring to. As you know, we filed that petition in honor about April 20th of this year. The state DPH committed to us that they would make a decision on our application within 90 days of April 20th. The 90 days runs on or about, depending upon how you count it, a number of days per month, on or about July 20th, which is next week. And I heard from the state DPH council today that they are on schedule to issue a decision. So that's, at least they're keeping that commitment. Hopefully, it'll be a positive result, but you'll know, as I know, at some point next week where that stands. Secondly, as to the comments both at the Bureau of Public Works Committee and the district board tonight by Ms. Dryden in West Hartford, there's a lot there to consider. I would suggest that that particular amendment be referred to the Bureau of Public Works. Let them take that into account, and perhaps Ms. Dryden can come in and give us some more details, and at least you could give that a little more consideration, a little more thought than either amendment tonight or just rejecting the proposal. I think there's some factors there that I didn't know about. I'm not suggesting that I'm in a position to recommend one way or the other at this point, but I think it deserves a fuller view before the Bureau of Public Works. And then finally, you'll be receiving from me, as you did last month, a litigation report, which will be an attorney-client privileged document, not unlike executive session, but rather than have everyone move out tonight and come back in, you'll get a written report from me in the next week or so. If you have any questions on that report, please feel free to call me directly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, Item 9, Bureau of Public Works, consideration and potential action regarding A: Modification of the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Consent Order Number COWRMU22002. There's no executive session on this?
No.
Okay. Is there a recommendation is to receive the report and adopt a resolution? We have to do these separately, right?
A and B, separate.
A is separate, yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Who do you want to start?
Yes. Commissioner Hoffmann.
Just a comment on the previous meeting for these two issues. In each case, we had a long discussion and both passed to this board unanimously, so there was no objections.
You want to start?
Yeah, I'm going to be very brief, happy to answer any questions. We went through the consent order that was issued to the MDC for the integrated plan that was submitted in December of 2018, was received by MDC in September of '22, so almost four years later. The board approved that integrated plan in December of '22. We have since modified the consent order with DEEP. I won't get into the details because we've talked a lot about this with the work in North Hartford. Basically, we're going to do $47 million worth of work in North Hartford under the integrated plan over the next 10 years, and now we're going to spend $155 million. This document that's been revised does that. There's nothing in this that we don't agree with. We submitted the scope of work. We've mentioned it numerous times at the board level. We've provided this to the commissioners and to our towns, so there's nothing in here that is any different than what we've been talking about since April. I'd be happy to get into it in detail if you'd like. We did that at BPW. Yeah, so I'd just like to leave it at that unless there's any questions. It's up to you if...
Are there any questions? Commissioner, go ahead, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I get the original consent order, right? And there's Appendix A in the original one.
That's attached.
Yep. And on there, talks about Franklin Avenue, South Park, Hartford conveyance tunnel, complete all the stuff, Contract Four, Franklin Avenue, as in Weatherford Cove by 2029.
Correct.
So then I go to the new one, which is now Appendix C, okay, which is what is deferred, okay? And it's the same exact language with a new column, which is the revised A, which is anywhere from 2030 to 2040. So?
Yes.
Is there a plan to come up with a plan?
Yes.
For all these in that last column? Or just fill me in on that.
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner, thank you. And so as we know that, and I mentioned this at BPW, the way in which we do, we were planning to do 47 million in North Hartford, and now we're going to do 155 million in the next 10 years, something had to give, right? So we've mentioned and talked about, we had to push $300 million worth of work, and one of those projects is this Contract Four, which is about $120, $118 million. And so the plan was, we've got to find a way to do this work in North Hartford without increasing the rate structure that was already approved in 2018 and 2022 by the board and by DEEP. So we pushed projects. And so what we did to address this, and DEEP is concerned about this, and I know Weatherfield is, I've talked to the town manager today, was if you look on page, and I apologize, I think it's page four.
The consent.
I'm sorry, page, not page four, page, is that page five, Jay? Yeah, page five, number four. We identify and agreed with DEEP over the last couple of days that we will do a study to determine what we do not want to do is we don't believe doing Contract Four is the right solution. Same way, we agreed that building a tunnel to North Hartford is the right solution. We believe that we should separate Franklin Avenue, take the $120 million, separate Franklin Avenue, and achieve the same goal, which is elimination of the overflow to Weatherfield Cove, and will actually be more beneficial to the Connecticut River than the, quote, "elimination." So what we agreed to is we would, by December of 2027, Commissioner, we will come up with a drainage study to determine how we're going to achieve that goal, which is per Appendix C between 2030 and 2040. And yes, it is a push, but it's how we're able to afford the work that we agreed to do in North Hartford. But I believe that it's going to become just like North Hartford. You're going to see, if we built Contract Four, we're going to build big infrastructure to capture an overflow, and then five, seven, eight, 10 years from now, we're going to have to do separation work and replacement work in Franklin Avenue, and everybody here is going to pay for it. So we're saying, pay once, right? Let's use the $120 million correctly and use it to improve. The good news is, I was very impressed with your town manager, Fred, and I apologize for his last name. He came from DEEP at Rhode Island. He's very familiar and completely understands CSO work because that's what he did, and he fully understood what we were talking about, and in my opinion, supported what we're proposing to do with Franklin Avenue. But it is a push, but we have a plan to get there. We're not saying, well, we know and agree, we have to eliminate the overflow to Weatherfield Cove.
So sometime after?
December 31st, 2020.
December 31st, 2027.
Yes, we'll have a plan. We'll have a plan, and it might include, Commissioner, it may include some components of this and some components of that. It might include, okay, we're going to separate here, and we're going to put in a pipe here, but it gives us a little flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? If not, all those in favor, please sign. I'm sorry, was there a motion? Yeah, we... All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, Item B, Sewer House Connection Program, Recommended Action, Receive the Report and Adopt a Resolution.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Chris Stone, District Counsel, and Commissioner Hoffmann got where I was going. This item appears on item number 11 of tonight's agenda regarding the ordinances, and I just want to indicate that the government committee approved the ordinances unanimously after a lengthy discussion, as Commissioner Hoffmann ably indicated. And if you were to approve the ordinance here, thankfully, there'll be nothing more to do on number 11, so you can skip that on your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a motion on recommended action is receive the report and adopt the resolution? Is there a motion? It's been moved. Is there a second? There's a second. Discussion. This was unanimous. There's some pieces still left here, some questions that we didn't get to possibly in the committee meeting, and we're going to open that up for discussion at this point in time under the adoption of Item B. Is there discussion? Commissioner Curry?
Mr. Chairman, just one question. Throughout the document, both for 10 and 11, it cites qualified contractor, but I couldn't find a reference to it. Where is defined him?
Scott?
So, Commissioner, we use the term qualified as a generic term, and the goal is that, as we mentioned in our BPW meeting, you've got two options. You can follow the MDC program, and the MDC will manage this program for you, and you won't have to, in a sense, do anything except provide your proper maintenance until such time that your lateral is replaced. If you choose to hire your own contractor, you will need a qualified contractor. We're not going to allow anyone to do work that we don't believe is qualified. So what does qualified mean? It means that you're, you have insurance, you're bondable, you're licensed, and that's the way we do our work everywhere. So you'll come down to Utility Services, and you'll ask for a permit, and we'll make sure that you're qualified. We'll make sure that your cost estimate to do the work is satisfactory to our standards, and make sure that it's permitted, and we inspect the work. So qualified is not defined in the ordinance, it's just a term, I guess, we're using.
We have a term that could be challenged by a homeowner as to whose interpretation of qualified is. Should we not have that term defined within our ordinance so that everyone knows the minimum qualifications for a qualified contractor?
So it just, so just remember, in our, I understand we could take the term out, probably easier. All of our ordinances references contractors that do work with the MDC, and we have a process in place that requires them to get permitted, and the administrative components of being permitted requires you to be bonded and insured. We can either take the term out, or we do this work everywhere. You know, it's not just this program that we're dealing with contractors on a regular basis. So getting into determining qualified under this ordinance may be complicated throughout the rest of the ordinances.
And I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting maybe it should be referred to the appropriate committee to find placement where we can define qualified contractors so that anyone out there who will fall under this possibility of...
We could expand that.
Will understand what the minimum qualifications are, and the person may hire.
Go ahead. There is a, if I might, Mr. Chairman, through you, District Counsel, in Section S4A refers to individuals or entities that are authorized to work on drains, and it goes through a series of conditions, and one of them is, goes to the license provision that the CEO indicated. Section 5 of that section talks about having a license, and then subject to conditions as established by the Bureau, manager of the Bureau of Public Works, which now is, I suppose, Mr. Lutbeck, at this point, we changed the names, but the function is the same. So there is some broad definition of what's qualified in terms of who's authorized to work on the drains. It's not the best, but if we can revisit that issue at a later date, there's enough here with having a license and a permit to do the work. I think that satisfies what your concern, but if you'd like to expand that...
I would like it through our committee to hear what...
We can refer the matter.
On that issue, that's fine, yes, that's fine.
We'll refer the matter. Commissioner?
I don't know if, I think maybe Don's right, maybe it needs to be expanded some, but you can't do any of this work, I mean, the MDC can say, you know, we want you to be qualified. You can't really do any of this work unless you're licensed with the Department of Consumer Protection.
Correct.
And anyone that does that without a license from Consumer Protection...
For getting to our system.
...is a contractor, or drain layers licensed, plumbers licensed, something, you know, license that applies to this, you're violating the law anyways, but maybe it shouldn't be expanded so to let a homeowner know that the person that's going to do this work for him has to have a license, you know, has to be registered with the Department of Consumer Protection.
Yeah, the comment is fair. Obviously, the MDC is not going to issue a permit to anyone who doesn't meet those minimum qualifications, which is permitted by the state of Connecticut, you're licensed by the state of Connecticut, you're insured, so, but we can, more than happy to expand that however you'd like.
Do we have an agreement, Scott, I'm sorry, do we have an agreement with the towns? I thought we used to have one with Hartford, where, so I didn't work there, it's not inside the house, you need a plumbing permit for it.
Yep.
So does that come from whatever town you're in, or are we able to issue those permits on behalf of the town?
We, yeah, we have the right as a utility to do our own plumbing work, putting in meters ourselves, without being licensed plumbers, but anyone who does work for us in that home is required to be licensed. So a utility has the right to perform its own work without being a licensed plumber.
You know, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, so as long as they're working for us, I guess if they're working for the homeowner...
They have to be licensed.
...there'd be a responsibility with the town to take out a permit there, pay the permit fee.
Yes, yes.
As long as they're only working on the utility part of it.
Yep, yep. And all the work, yes, all the work done in the home is permitted by both ourselves, and there's obviously building permits associated with us.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 10, Board of Finance, Consideration and Potential Action Regarding A: Supplemental Appropriation of $129,900,000 for the 2023 Integrated Plan and Authorization for Issuance of Bonds or Notes Not to Exceed $129,900,000. of Bonds or Notes Not to Exceed $129,900,000. Recommended action is proposed amendment. There is an amendment to this with the clerk, please.
Yeah, I, yeah, if I, I'll just quickly talk about the actual work, and Chris can talk about the bond language.
Can we have a motion to adopt, and then get into the proposed amendment? Is there a motion to adopt? Item A, it's been moved and seconded. The motion to amend, okay.
Yes, thank you. So at Board of Finance, we requested, as we know.
Make the motion to amend, so we can debate the motion.
Has that been distributed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
This is the funding.
If I might, Chris Stone, District Counsel, and just, and I apologize to Commissioner Solimi, I, I thought this was going to be included in the underlying resolution, it's not, it does have to, I apologize to you, sir. But the, as was indicated when you had a discussion about the modified consent order, there was a change from Deep in terms of expanding the area in which the, what is the $4 million for repair, replacement, and rehab of sewers, sewer ladders, ladders, to include a portion of Albany Avenue. Deep, we discussed that with Deep, they decided to expand it, but as they did that, that particular item within the resolution, which is number seven, became eligible, there's no guarantees, but eligible for grant funding from the state of Connecticut. And so the amendment before you is to modify the bond resolution to include language, which is the new section three to number seven on the bond, uh, bond resolution, to enable us to access that grant portion, should that become available, number one. And number two, in the explanation of that particular project, and this goes, this is page 10A of the amendment, of the proposed amendment, we're adding that language, which was, the project would be funded from the state stabilization fund, two, the project may utilize great grant funding, et cetera, and any, any monies necessary beyond that would, we'd be able to access the, the rates stabilization fund. So it's really just expanding our funding sources to do that project, or to, to fund that particular item.
On behalf of the chair, is there a motion to move the amendment?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded, fine, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there questions on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Solimi.
Sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this, this was passed at the Board of Finance, you know, this laid out, without the amendment.
Right, yeah.
There was an error.
Are there further questions to the amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On the main motion, is there a discussion? Are there questions? Main motion that was unanimously adopted by the Public Works, as was stated prior by Commissioner Hoffman. Further questions? No questions? All those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, that passes. Item B, capital project.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
We'll go. Yeah. Item B, capital project closeout, recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt? It's been moved and seconded.
Correct.
Chris, you have.
No, we're, yeah.
Scott.
I, I think we, Commissioner Solimi, we presented the closeout projects at Board of Finance, it was adopted unanimously, and we happen to go through any, any, any of the details, but.
Are there any questions on the capital? Okay. If not, all those in favor of item B, capital project closeouts, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? So be it. Item 11, Committee on MDC Government, consideration and potential action regarding sewer ordinance provisions. There's an amendment here, too.
Yeah, I, I have been, I have been corrected.
Corrected.
Chris Stone, District Counsel, by the, by the able District Clerk. We do have, you do have to act on that, number 11. That, that is the actual ordinance, and the language of the ordinance that incorporates the plan that was, or a program that was approved in item 9B, so there do require action on that.
Is there a motion to amend?
Motion to adopt first.
Just adopt.
Just to adopt?
No, we also need to amend, something needs to be.
Right. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Is there a motion to amend the main motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment? Who's going to do the?
I can do it, but I could. This is on the, so, we've, we've talked about this in detail at BPW as well. I'd happily go through any details, but there were a number of comments by some commissioners that we felt was important to clarify, and as we talked about earlier, just terminology, we, we've traditionally used the term lateral from a sewer service from a home to the main, and by ordinance, it's really house connection, that's the true definition, so we made a lot of changes there. We also made it clear that the homeowner has the right to hire their own contractor, qualified contractor, so it's been clarified in that as well. That's really the two main changes in what was presented, and we'll happily answer any questions.
Liability issue.
Yeah, the liability, well, we've talked about that numerous times. The liability of maintaining the sewer house connection presently exists 100% with the homeowner, and it still exists 100% with the homeowner. We do not want to take the liability of maintenance. We're only simply offering to pay in a couple of different ways for a replacement, relining, replacement lateral house connection to, to, to a property, and there's two ways to do it. You can go through an MDC program, where we manage the whole thing for you, or you can hire a qualified contractor, which would get permitted, would, would need to be licensed, would also need to provide us with a cost estimate, and would have to be inspected by MDC staff, inspection team, to, to be qualified, to be reimbursed.
But in both cases, it would be paid for by the MDC.
It would be, in both cases, it's paid for by the, the, both cases paid for by the revolving fund for the clean water project, because we have proven and justified to Deep that it is a benefit to the CSO, SSO program, and so we're paying for it by that, by that revolving fund. And in the case of North Hartford, as the pilot, Deep has agreed to give us 50% grant for that work on that private property.
Further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment to the main motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the main motion, is there further discussion on the main motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number 12, just before we close, this was a very complicated and lengthy process, and I want to commend our chief executive officer, our legal department, and the staff in general, for a very difficult job in the beginning of something that hopefully will resolve many of the problems we're facing, but it should also be very clear that this is not the solution to flooding in the terms, total context of what we're, where we're going. This is the first step in the motion to make sure that we address the questions of backups in homes, and also begins to mitigate the issue of flooding. You want any?
Yeah, I just reiterate what the chairman said. We've been very clear to the public, we had a public hearing on July, on June 29th, and we'll have another one on July 25th. We, we had an outreach meeting specifically on Durham Street, which is our first street that we're planning to do work. We made a commitment to start digging in July. We, we're going to comply with that commitment. July 17th, we're planning to start the water main work on Durham, which will be in, in preparation for the sewer work, so, but we, but we have to all agree that, that the work that the MDC is doing, whether the work we were planning to do, or the work that we're proposing to do, is not going to solve street flooding. July 4th, we received three inches of rain in 40 minutes, that was 154-year storm. August 19th, 2021, we received seven inches of rain in less than eight hours, that was a 244-year storm. We've received multiple rainstorms in the past couple of weeks, three inches here, two inches there, five inches in Litchfield County this past week. What we're proposing to do is not ever going to solve that. That's not what we're proposing to do. What we're proposing to do is stop sewer that's in our pipe, that's being affected by stormwater, that's getting into our system some way, somehow, coming into your home, and overflowing to the river. Whatever is in our MDC sewer system, we want to keep it from coming into your home, that's what we're doing, to the chairman's point. It will mitigate and help flooding, but it's not going to solve flooding. Flooding is a much bigger challenge, a lot more infrastructure, a lot more money that needs to be allocated in order to solve that problem. So it's a start, but our position is, let's get the stormwater out of the sewer system at the source, at the home, at the business, at the street, and a lot of good things will follow from that, but it's going to take time.
Change the model.
Yep.
And, I mean, this is not something new, the environment has changed, and it's changing dramatically, quickly, the temperatures, and it's not only happening in New England and Hartford, it's happening all over the country. Every time you turn on the news, you're seeing flooding in someplace in the country because of the environmental changes. Unfortunately, in the area of sewer, and, and stormwater, and things of that nature, back in 1978, the federal government basically took a walk on this whole funding process. In 19, up to 19, in 1978, they made a decision in Washington to basically get out of the funding pattern. The pattern prior to 1978 was similar to the highway, it's the same thing as the highway funding, 80% from the federal government, and 20% from the local agency like MDC. In 1978, to present, the federal government has moved away and has not made that kind of an investment. And now you're seeing what happens when you don't anticipate where it's going. So there's going to have to be major efforts in Washington to deal with this on a national level. It's not a local level issue, it's not just Connecticut, as, as the chief executive officer said, so it's a beginning. Okay. Opportunity for general public comment? Commissioners, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, Alyssa Peterson, Granby Terrace, and Hartford. I expected some other folks to speak tonight, but if they're not going to, I will. Very respectfully, sir, I disagree with your assessment. You've known, the MDC, many of the commissioners have been here, you've known about the sewer backup in the North Hartford area, especially Edgewood Street and elsewhere. There have been many community activists that have come before, have spread the alarm, and the MDC just has not dealt with the specific issue of the sewer discharge into people's homes. I'm sorry, I, I disagree with your statement generically. Secondarily, Weathersfield got their issues dealt with because they had a descendant of the Mayflower, Lee Standish, who was a public relations executive, and he had legal help, and they got the Weathersfield Cove and the sewer discharge addressed very publicly with Deep, with the federal government, and they got taken care of. We really have to agree that the north end of Hartford and sewer backup into homes specifically has been ignored and has not been dealt with. To that end, I hear all these marvelous efforts, I read about them in the Current, thanks to Deidre's coverage. You need a website. You need a website, just like the Brainerd Airport Study website, which basically broadcasts, here is what we're studying, here's the phase one, phase two reports, here are the public meetings, here's what we've learned, with every single agreement adopted, with every single amendment or change made to the program, to the final report coming up, it's posted. Nowhere, I mean, I, I develop websites. Nowhere can I find easily what the MDC is doing step by step about this latest problem in North Hartford. Either you put a big starburst on your website, and you announce, and you keep posting information, or you develop something separately. But these folks, Hartford, other places, we deserve to know what it is you're doing, and I commend you. If you've got the, you know, Deep and your 50% reimbursement rate, fantastic. But your statement just now, that this is not going to solve flooding, I will bet you that 99 out of 100 people in Hartford would not understand that the work you're going to undertake is not going to solve flooding. You've just said it tonight specifically, it's going to solve sewer backup into homes. We've heard that before in Hartford. So very respectfully, I think this board must look at other public relations efforts. Specifically, again, I urge you to look at the Brainerd Study 2023 website, it very clearly shows you what they're doing. We need that from this MDC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Dabala, CEO Scott Jellison, Attorney Chris Stone, Commissioner Elvin, I want to thank you for the comment that you made on Monday, about the city of Hartford, the north end. I want to thank you because I know you have really put a lot of effort into trying to make this whole. I wanted to make a comment, I was literally over there waiting for Attorney Jen as a comment, so, you know, Alyssa, I'm going to comment. So thank you. I guess my, my question is, from this point, we have the funding, we spoke the other day, we have some of the victims here, because what we really wanted to know was, when, do you have a specific date when we're going to start working on the backwater flow valves? Because as, as you said the other day, we had the storm on July 4th, and people's, same situation, the sewage backup, and the church right here, we have the manager who manages the Colin Bennett Building, and North United Methodist Church here, Miss Donna Campbell, you know, who, who had caused, so we're really concerned about when this is actually going to start, because the information that we got from Deep, there are no specific timetables on it. So, you know, we're, we're, we wanted to start dealing with what's happening now, and start working on it fixed. So you, and, and then the other thing, too, how the, how the residents, how the victims can apply for this program, this is the other thing, they need to be able to go and apply for it, so you were able to send your workers out.
That's a separate, separate, you're talking about the $5 million per?
No, not $5 million, not, not that, I'm talking about the, was it the sewage, the Hartford sewage program? Where are you going to start working on the?
That's the $5 million.
That's the $5 million.
That's, that's the $5 million, that's.
The legislature's appropriated.
On the website.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the victims getting reimbursed for their property, I'm talking about when are you going to start installing the backwater flow valves from the 85 million dollars that the government spent.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, so, so, as you know, Bridget, we had our meeting on June 29th, you were there, and we are actively, aggressively, meeting with, with the community, there's about 20, just use as Durham Street as an example, there's about 20, some odd homes, 24 homes on Durham Street. We've, we've identified, there was one backwater valve installed in that street in the past. We're actively, we were out there today, we're actively trying to get everyone assessed and get those backwater valves installed on Durham Street. That's our priority right now, obviously, because we're going to be doing excavation in August for the sewer, we're going to be doing water excavation this July 17th. gonna be doing water excavation this July 17th, and so we are actively, we have another meeting, as you know, July 25th, we're actively encouraging people to sign up for our backwater valve program, and we're assessing multiple properties in North Hartford as we speak.
And part of that program is to educate people that have them installed, help assist in cleaning them, explaining to them how it operation, reviewing them. It's an outreach program, it's gonna significantly change that whole process on private property. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that, that's what we want to know, like, from this point, where do we go? How can we help people be made whole?
We're doing that right now in that process.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Could we, can we, excuse me. Okay, excuse me, could we have order?
Can you bring that outside? Bring it.
I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is, I'm Devi Matan, is Alderman for Ily Nelson. I'm bringing my old church ministry, where I've been 52 years, but I've been at 87 Lime Street where I raised my grandchildren, three grandchildren, three beautiful grandchildren, send them off to college. However, I'm the only one there now, and I'm gonna let you all know, I'm not feeling so well. I'm gonna tell you the truth. Being that, I endured already, not three, not two, but I endured already about four to five backups, backups. Not just only regular water, but sewage water. And if you guys are wanting to sell property to us residents, no one did never tell me that the property was always backing up a sewage with water. Yeah, I thank you for the sump pump that DMC put in my home, that's kind of saved the house while I was away on my birthday, which was June 30th. I have lived here 71 years, I have been 71 years old as of June 30th. However, when I returned home, July 7th, no, the July 8th, the house was kind of soaked, you could tell it flooded, but I had to remove the fourth washing machine, which was full of sewage. Oh, I'm just asking you all, really, I know y'all have forgot about, in the area of Lime Street, a lot of people forgot about that area. I'm still there, the walk is still there, and they place also flooded. I'm just asking, will the city appropriate, in fact, Brian, Mr. Matthews, him and his son, they did send someone there from their office on today, and I thank and praise God for that, but however, I'm asking, that will y'all please really do something in that area? And I keep telling people, I know people think I'm crazy, which I'm not, which I'm not, you all. When I tell people that the water come up in the middle of the street, it comes up in the middle of the street, and I'm talking about them five blocks, Pembroke, Lime Street, the five blocks, it's a whole five block right in the middle, the water comes right up in the middle, and that's where it begins. So, I'm just wanting to let y'all know, please don't forget about us, over on the corner of Lime in Pembroke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comment? If not, could we go to item number 13?
We have one more.
One more, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners, administrators, and others. My name is Cynthia Jennings, and I live in Hartland Street in Hartford, Connecticut. My concern is that on July 4th, we had a very serious flooding incident throughout the entire city, but in particular, in North Hartford. Now, I know we're moving forward with the backwater valves and other issues that are, the backwater valves, and what was the other one?
Laterals.
The laterals?
Laterals.
Sump pumps.
Okay.
Sump pumps.
And the sump pumps. But I think that we need to also have information that lets people know that we're also moving forward to address some of these other issues in Hartford. Because we're doing the issues that don't directly affect the stormwater and the sewage, we really need to have some information that goes out to the community, that lets them know where you're working on the separation, and what else is being done in the community. Because it doesn't mean, just because we have these programs, that this should be the only thing that's taking place in North Hartford. So, I'm just asking that you take that into consideration, and that we are advised as to exactly what's going on, as well as, who do people contact if they have issues or questions or want to file a claim? Something in writing that people can actually leave with, and take home, and distribute to other people, so that we know who's getting called. I know Jeff King is supposed to be called regarding the residents and the training, but we also need information on who do people call for what, so that we have very clearly, and not just on a website, some people are seniors, some people are not into computers, we need some written information for the community, so that they know exactly what's going on, and who to contact if they have issues.
Okay. Scott, why don't you, because we're working on that program right now.
Yeah, if I may, so, I agree 100% with what you said, in terms of our outreach and communication. We're trying to get this approved tonight, and then we will implement, we actually have already secured outreach consultants that will help our staff, and we, as you, as I said earlier, we are physically out on Durham Street today, talking to the residents about the water main work. We were out on June 29th, talking in general to the NRZ mouth in Blue Hills regarding the work that we're doing. We're having another outreach meeting on July 25th, to do exactly the same thing, and then every project area, so as you know, we're separating five streets, and there'll be work on Tower Avenue, we'll be having meetings specifically with those street areas. It will start out in really, in weekly meetings, construction meetings, biweekly, two-week look-ahead meetings, there's gonna be a lot of activity that's gonna happen very quickly. So, we're just not there yet, but we will start very quickly on Durham Street.
Thank you, and one last request, and that is that, when people, when you're talking about what streets you're going to be working on, at least have an outcome that people can think about, and know what changes are going to be made in the community, because these streets are being worked on. I think that's critical as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Good evening, everyone. I have a great concern in regards to homeowners...
I'm sorry, sir, would you mind stating your name for the record?
My name is Preston Neil, owner of Penny's Construction I have one great concern in regards to the homeowners selecting a contractor as doing the backwater valve. Now, we all know that each and every one of them is totally different. How in the world is it gonna be fair for the contractor and for the homeowner to make a decision on something like this? I think that we need to set some form of guideline to where we're gonna go with this. For an example, if one homeowner decides that she wants to hire, well, he or she wants to hire their own contractor to actually do the backwater valve, and they overcharge them, where's the guideline? Do we have some form of a contract set up, where we can actually give something and say, okay, well, you are out of bounds, your range is too high, or something, are we gonna set some kind of goal for that?
If I may, yes, we are, we're actually bidding that as we speak. We've had a number of outreach meetings throughout the last month, reaching out to Hartford-based plumbers, and we've, in our other towns, so, we're gonna be having bids due, Kelly, when? So, this work is going to be bid, there'll be unit prices that will be approved, and the qualified contractors will be part of our bid process, they have to be DAS certified, so we will make sure that we do have qualified contractors, and we will have unit prices that will be used as part of the installation of the work, so...
Very well.
Yes.
Thank you. Further comment? If not...
13, request for future agenda items.
A request for Commissioners and future agenda items, are there any? If not, the appropriate motion to adjourn is in order. Removed, without exception, we stand adjourned.